Would help if we had this. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the July 23rd Board of County Commissioner meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we have an echo. I'm not sure if you guys can hear that. Or if that's something that can be fixed. Okay. We have a new system, so just please bear with us. If I could just ask you to take your bow, bow your head in a moment of silence, please. Commissioner Loeb?
Oh, please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we don't have any minutes for approval. Resolution number three. Commissioner Smith? Resolution?
I was just telling... Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, we got it. I was just telling the county manager, "This is annoying."
It's hard to hear the feedback.
Yeah, it's hard to hear what we're saying. I hope you guys can hear, understand what we're saying. Because, yeah, I, it is terrible.
I don't know how we rectify that at this point. I'm sure they're working on it.
Let's hope they're working on it.
Like I said, it's a new system, so we apologize. But I'm sure they're trying to fix it. This is a first for us, so.
Jamie Moore and Donna Bolton, could you come to the podium, please? Again, everybody, come on up. More the merrier. We want to recog... Hello? Now we don't have any mic. Okay, I'll speak up.
It's on, on my end.
Hello? Okay, now it's working. We're happy to have all of you here today. Let me read this, and then I'll give you the floor. Whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising offenders in the community, and whereas community corrections professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas community corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and community corrections professionals advocate community and restorative justice, and whereas community corrections professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities, and now ther... Bah! Let's try that again. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of July 21st, 27th, 2019 as pretrial probation and parole supervise... Supervision Week. Clients, employees, and communities power through partnerships and encourage all citizens to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of July 2019. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you to Commissioner Smith.
For sponsoring the resolution declaring this the pretrial probation parole week. I'm honored to recognize the tremendous efforts that the Brevard probation officers and staff of the Florida Department of Corrections put into maintaining supervision over nearly 5,000 offenders in Brevard County. These officers are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to support the Florida Department of Corrections' mission of creating a continuum of services to meet the needs of the offenders entrusted to our care. They staff and facilitate self-improvement programs such as Thinking for a Change, Moral Recognition Therapy, and they seek out and make referrals to treatment providers, host job fairs, and coordinate GED classes, all while working to create a safer community by monitoring compliance with court orders and partnering with other law enforcement agencies to conduct probation compliance initiatives. Our hope is that the efforts put forth by these officers reduces victimization, creates safer communities, and leads to the offender's successful outcome of their cases, and thereby accomplish the Florida Department of Correction vision of inspiring success by transforming one life at a time. I applaud the hard-working officers and staff of our three probation officers here in Brevard County, and I'm honored that the Commission has publicly recognized their hard work and their dedication to the citizens of Brevard County and the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have you guys come to the speakers, please?
Head all the way this way. Put everybody together.
Sorry.
Better for you, not better tasting, right?
Thank all of you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we have the Florida Inland Navigation District check presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Jerry Sansom. I'm the Brevard County Commissioner to the Florida Inland Navigation District. For those of y'all that aren't aware of the district, we were created in 1927 by the Florida Legislature to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to complete and maintain the Atlantic Intercoastal Waterway as it goes through Florida. It's a significant economic engine worth about $2 billion to Brevard County. And over the, in that time, like I said, we completed the waterway and worked to maintain the waterway. Since 1986, the Legislature felt that the district could do more to help foster the economic development along the waterway, and they gave us an additional responsibility of working with counties and municipalities and state agencies to improve the infrastructure along the waterway so that that economic engine that the waterway is could be further improved. And in that time, we have worked in Brevard County with the county and the municipalities to assist in funding over 140 projects worth over $35 million. With regard to Brevard County, we've worked with the county for over, almost 60 projects in that period of time in, in all the areas of the county. Recently, we've, we've worked, and I'll start at the bottom of the county, not in priority. We helped fund Christensen's Landing Facility. We have worked with the Water Management District and other entities to remove muck from all of the major basins in Brevard County, about $34 million worth of activity there. We have done a number of boat ramps and parks. The MIAPOW was one that we started on early with y'all, and we've done several projects, including starting with convincing the Florida Department of Transportation to utilize the causeways to enhance the recreational activities and involvement in Brevard County. We helped purchase and fund Griffith's Landing in Merritt Island. We've done considerable work at Kelly Park. We helped create and fund the Fishing Catwalks on Max Brewer to enhance that activity, as well as numerous projects within, within the cities. We're currently working with the county to assist y'all in purchasing a spoil site on Merritt Island for your dredging needs in Sykes Creek and the canals on Merritt Island and those areas, and that's, that's, y'all have applied for funding of half a million dollars for that project, and I'm glad to say that the Board is supportive of that, and we just got to go through our finish process to be able to award that grant. What I'm here for today is to present y'all with a check for the final project on the MIAPOW park at the foot of the Pioneer Causeway. There've been some, I won't say issues, but as we developed that park, one of the first things we did in there in cooperation with y'all is build the clubhouse for groups to meet and expand the parking, create a nice launching ramp. But one of the things that came up in that was there was a big bunch of rock. You know, we have rock in our waters here in Brevard County, and occasionally it's near the shore, and so unfortunately, that boat ramp puts you in the water, and you immediately had to take a hard turn to avoid ending up on a rock reef. And that took considerable effort with the various environmental agencies to be able to get that permitted. Well, recently, we, you have completed the channel dredging of MIAPOW park so that folks can launch and go straight out and not have to worry about where the rocks are and follow the channel. And so I'm here today to present y'all with a check for $260,000 for our portion of reimbursing y'all in that project, and we look forward to working with you for many projects in the future. And, and, oh, also recently, y'all applied for Matt and your Boating and Waterways Division for a short-term grant for derelict vessel removal, which we removed those two vessels that were sitting on the waterfront in Cocoa for, ever since Irma came through and deposited those in homeowners' front yards. And, you know, there were, there were ownership issues there, and we finally got those resolved. And so Matt applied for an out-of-cycle grant, I think it was $40,000, to join with the money that y'all had gathered up to aid derelict vessel removal. We got those things pulled out, and the folks got their waterfront back. So, like to present y'all, like I said, with this check for $260,000, and looking, look forward to working with y'all on the, there you go, somebody wants to take that check. And I also want to let you know that after you acquire that land for that spoil site, our grants are eligible, or you are eligible to apply to grant for us to help you construct the dike, the actual spoil facility on that. That's also eligible for a 50-50 grant. So we'd be glad to entertain y'all next year when you come and ask for, after you've acquired that land, to come and help us, let us help you build that so that you can get on with what you need to do in there. And I appreciate that. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Just want to thank you especially, glad I got that echo fixed. Thanks to SGTV as well. I want to thank you as well...
That was a pretty fast fix for them.
Well, we definitely, we've got a good crew here, but I want to thank you for the, the help with the derelict vessels. I know Matt Culver spoke real highly of the interaction that he's had with y'all in Find to get that taken care of. So that's something with the county pushing and you guys pushing as well. I think we're moving in the right direction, whether, we're down actually to a closer to reasonable number. I think we're around 40 vessels now throughout the county, and that's slated in the next six months to essentially be wiped to zero, understanding full well, of course, that there are going to be more that become derelict during the time.
Yes, sir. I don't know that we'll ever actually get to zero. Brevard has, in essence, more waterway than any other county on the East Coast. You know, we got the Indian River, we got the Banana River, and then you got the various creeks and things. So linearly, we have a lot of waterway here, and we also have some nice weather that comes through and unfortunately blows vessels loose and gets them onshore, some of which have ownership issues. And so I'm afraid we're always probably going to be dealing with derelict vessels, but we are very eager to work with y'all to clean up those, those issues. And I also wanted to point out that, you know, we are partnering with the state agencies and with y'all on the muck removal in Lagoon. That's a very critical issue here because the waterway won't be an economic engine if nobody wants to use it. And so it's our, our whole thing is, is how do we make that waterway, how do we maximize the waterway for economic activities and economic development for this, for this county?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speaking of derelict vessels, as you know, I live on the water.
Yes, sir.
And derelict vessels are a real nightmare for everybody. Everybody. And so I think I've come up with some ideas, and I've been working with some of the, of our county legislators from the state, with an idea, come up with an amnesty program where people that get a boat that they don't want to deal with anymore, rather than just take it out and anchor it and wait till it sinks, and then it's, it becomes the county's problem or the state's problem. This would allow those people to turn that boat over to the state, and it's much cheaper to dispose of a floating boat than it is a sunken boat, not to mention the horrible environmental damages that's done when they sink. So hopefully, we can get that done in the next, next session.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct with that, and we actually had it our meeting on Friday in Fernandina Beach. We had a presentation by Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Boating and Waterways Division, and that was one of the issues that they brought up. And of course, we will do everything we can to assist with that, because you're exactly right. A floating boat is a whole lot easier to remove than one that's sunk. And if you can believe this, sometimes they stay in the water so long that we have to do an environmental concern because the, ah, the fish and wildlife considers them artificial reefs by then. And you can't just remove, excuse me, you can't just rem... I'm telling you, it's just one of those things. You know, you, it sinks, the process, I'll use that word lightly, takes so long that it becomes a habitat, and lo and behold, it's a habitat, and you can't move habitat without mete mitigation, and so it's, you know, it's just one of those things that you deal with. It's frustrating, but you're exactly right. And Brevard County is one of the few counties, and we're encouraging the rest of them to do it, that doesn't charge if, if a person does want to get rid of their boat, and they do manage to carry it to the landfill. Brevard County hasn't been charging tipage fees to get rid of that vessel, because that's also a considerable cost, and if somebody, you know, it's not like the old days where you just, and I never did this, but people did it, you just dragged the boat up into marsh, and you just let it deteriorate, and, you know, when you're talking about wood boats, and after a year or two, there wasn't anything there but the metal pieces. Well, with a fiberglass boat, that doesn't happen anymore. That sucker's just about there forever. So you got it, it gets to the point where it's not usable, you're not using it, nobody wants it, you can't give it away, your neighbor doesn't like it, and a lot of people just take it out, anchor it in the river, and, and hopefully, they don't live close enough to it to see it regularly, and out of sight, out of mind. And I live on the water, too, and some of those boats that are out are not very well in this not being maintained. Their anchors and system is not up to par. I've watched them in storms go both ways, in front of my house dragging anchor now, south, and then dragging anchor back north when the wind turns around, and you just wonder where it's going to end up. But thank you for, appreciate y'all supporting that, and hopefully, we can get that done. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we get started into the meeting, there was some confusion because we allowed some latitude with public comment last time. Typically, we have five minutes for quasi-judicial type of public hearings, so we're going to go back to the way that, you know, I hate to say the way we've always done it, but probably the most efficient way, and we'll go back to the three-minute allotment that we've always done, so there isn't any confusion. But obviously, for quasi-judicial matters, we'll, we'll do the five minutes, but we don't have any of those matters today, so unless Commission has an issue with it, so we're consistent, three minutes, should cut it. I mean, that's what we've always done in the past, but... Okay, I have a, I have some cards for item F1. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, we have two more resolutions. Getting ahead of myself. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. I have Sebastian Corbett here and his family, if y'all want to come forward. I believe we have everybody but Malia. Yeah?
Yeah.
Sebastian, I'm really honored to get to do this for you. You know, I held you as a newborn baby, and I've watched you grow up to quite a wonderful man, and I'm very proud of who you are. And Erin and Amanda, you've done a great job, and Grandma and Grandpa have been so involved in your lives, but I'm really proud of this family, and you're just really good people, and I appreciate you giving us Sebastian. Whereas Sebastian Corbett has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank awarded to a Boy Scout by completing the demanding requirements of personal development, leadership, community service, and whereas Sebastian earned membership in the Order of the Arrow and has worked hard towards his Eagle Scout Award by obtaining 29 merit badges, whereas only 5% of all Boy Scouts will earn the Eagle Scout Award, a performance-based achievement with standards that have been well-maintained over the years. Whereas Sebastian attends Titusville High School, has earned a 3.5 GPA, lettered in swim and dive, actively participates in the NJROTC and the robotics club, and whereas for his Eagle project, Sebastian developed, planned, and led a project to benefit Friends of the Cemetery at the Day Street Cemetery. His work involved cleaning, recording, developing a database for the state of Florida for over 780 graves, which include many of those who served in the military. Whereas the lessons learned by obtaining the Eagle Scout Award are important not only to the life of the scout, but also to enhance the future development of leadership in our nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and congratulate Sebastian Corbett for his outstanding efforts in obtaining his Eagle Scout Award, and offers congratulations and best wishes for his future success. Done, ordered, and adopted, Madam Chair, on this 23rd day of July 2019, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Sebastian, is there anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say thank you. You guys have my troop. You guys really helped me a lot, so, thank you.
Those are always my favorite resolutions because those, those young men work so hard, and young ladies work so hard to, to get to that point, so we're proud of you, Sebastian. Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
Great, this next one should be fun. I've got a presentation from Senior Airman Bennett, who is the Legislative Representative of the Air Force Sergeants Association, and also Don with Two Ends Weaver, who is tremendously involved in the Veterans Center over in my district at the Veterans Memorial Park. So they've got a presentation regarding communication and cross-county awareness, and I'm going to turn the floor over to them. Thank you all.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. Again, my name is Nicholas Bennett. I am the Space Coast AfSA Legislative Representative, and I'm here with a man who many of you know in this forum, Mr. Don Weaver, as you had already introduced. AfSA is the Air Force Sergeants Association, and we advocate for federal legislation that affects our veterans and active-duty service members to protect their earned benefits on Capitol Hill. Our job, in a nutshell, is to support our troops and their well-being, both during and after they have served our country. You might think that in this effort, everybody is on the same page, but unfortunately, the national budget does not always reflect that assumption. Legislation specific to issues that involve benefit plans and active-duty and retirement pay need to be revisited year after year and supported by voice by, like organizing, sorry, revisited year after year and supported by a voice from organizations like ours. That said, I am here today to ask for your partnership to rapidly raise awareness of AfSA throughout your respective districts. AfSA represents more than 100,000 members that lend their voice to our lobbyists on the Hill. 1,037 of those members are your constituents. In addition, we are told that there are currently over 150,000 retirees across Brevard County, and many are included in the 72,000 veterans living in Brevard. This highlights just how loud the AfSA voice can be in this region. Your support would maximize our potential to best speak on behalf of the people whose lives are affected by the legislation we work to support and defend. Specifically, we ask for connection and exposure throughout the county. AfSA wants to continue speaking to the people that we so passionately advocate for by any means within your purview, through inclusion in related events, continued correspondence regarding VA and military-related policy, local military and VA policy, and even your sponsorship for news outlet appearances. AfSA wants Brevard County to know that you have a partner that bridges a shared vision all the way to DC. AfSA also wants to share the connection to the Commission already created by the Veterans Memorial Center and over 50 other veteran organizations, organizations in the area. Thank you for your attention. Now let, let me ask Don to chime in real quick.
Thank you. It's my honor to once again try to support active-duty people in the military after my own service. We are delighted to have a chance here to tell you not just about AfSA, but there are organizations like that at NOTU, the Navy Ordnance Test Unit, at the Coast Guard, at the 920th Rescue Wing, at the DEOMI, at the 45th Space Wing, and we veterans are in connection with all of those. If we can partner with all of those and engage with you, we will be a stronger county and a stronger place for veterans and others to, to see the benefits of life and the cooperation. On a personal note, having talked to this Commission several different times over the years, thank you. You have helped us to make the best Veterans Memorial Center and park in the state, and I dare say in most states. The state came through with a million and a half dollars to build a new museum, the county a million dollars to start the park, and another nearly a million dollars to finish the park through Parks and Rec. That facility is a place where active-duty people already come and share in the relationships with veterans as we go to the bases ourselves when we can, and make that synergy of the trilateral partnership work. So thank you very much, and it is really a delight to be a veteran and come home where I grew up in Brevard County, Florida. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. All right, moving on to the consent. We have some items...we have some cards for item F1. Did any other commissioner want to pull anything from consent?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, if I can get a motion to approve consent with minusing item F1. I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item F1, would staff like to speak on that or introduce it before the cards, or...
Good morning, Commissioners. This is land certification for the mid-reach of the Brevard County Federal Shore Protection Project. In August of 2016, the Board of County Commissioners entered a project partnership agreement with the U.S. Army Corps to construct the mid-reach project. The agreement requires that Brevard acquire real estate interests in all of the beachfront properties where the sand will be placed. On October of 2018, the Board approved a resolution of necessity that authorized staff in the county attorney's office to proceed with a quick take proceeding for the easements that had not been garnered voluntarily. On May 7 of 2019, the Board authorized the chair to execute all certification of lands for the project, subject to receipt of an order of taking from the court. We received that order of taking for the remaining five easements on May 23. This gave us the required real estate interest that we need to certify lands to the Army Corps of Engineers. However, the...that quick take has been appealed. Meanwhile, the Army Corps must have land certification by the end of July. The project is already out for bid. They have to have that land certification before the bid opening. So staff requests the...that the Board authorize a conditional certification. The conditional certification that's in your packet is similar to conditional certification in action that the County Commission took in 2000, when a similar situation occurred for the north reach, and the appeal that time was denied. So the project is to be constructed starting in November through April 30. We have to get started as close to November 1st as possible for the project to be able to be constructed in a single season before the April 30 permit imposed deadline for sea turtle nesting. And in order to start by November 1st, we need to certify lands now so that the Army Corps will open the bids and proceed with the project. Any delay in this certification at this time could push the project into the following fiscal year, federal fiscal year, and unfortunately, a lot of the federal funding has an extremely tight timeline and could be lost. So up to $37 million that we have worked on with our congressional delegation and lots of agency staff is at risk if we don't move forward now. And I have more details on that if you want it. I think that's the gist. One other thing is we've spent 15 to 16 million getting to this point for the mid-reach already. We've constructed an $11 million mitigation reef that was just completed in June, and we have moved forward with a public notice per your authorization for the erosion control line, mailing notification to 2,000 oceanfront residents that the project would begin construction this year.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan? And after Sandra, Karen Colby?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I reached out to the Florida Oceanic Society, which is based in Martin County. They went through a similar process down there where it was proposed to bring in and with the beach nourishment, cover their reef. And today, that's now tourist destinations considered one of the treasures of Martin County, and I would urge you to relook at the environmental aspect. I want to read just a couple things. This is a sign that they have on their beaches. They promote this...the habitat there. This is called Celebarid Worm Reef. The Celebarid...I don't know how to say that. The worms are about an inch long. They group in clusters of 50,000 per square meter, create their homes from pieces of sand. During high tide, the worms move to the tops of the tubes to feed, blah, 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 blah. But it says, you know, it's educational about telling people how to protect them and help teach those around you, these fascinating creatures, experience this unique ecosystem, and help others protect what you now understand. They have also a number of brochures I've put about in the lobby on the bulletin board about these. One of the...I just want to read. "These reefs help to maintain the integrity of the beaches by trapping sand and reducing erosion, specifically during storms. The worm reefs provide a significant habitat for many marine organisms by providing shelter and food sources. Crabs, algae, octopus, sponges, fishes, sea cucumbers all benefit from worm reefs. Sea turtles feed on algae and sea lattices that thrive on the surface of these reefs." I think they should be protected, like Martin County did. They should be embraced and celebrated. They are part of our ecosystem, and if one thing is taught us, we don't always understand all of the elements of our ecosystems. We make changes, and then we go, oops, you know, that was a mistake. I think in a recent storm, not, you know, in one of the storms we had, the artificial reef they put out there, there were chunks of it washing up on the shore, so I'm sure they're trying to address that. So I think it's just bass...oh, one last thing on this one. It also says, and I'd like to have a comment back on this, "These reefs are protected under the Florida Coral Reef Protection Act, Chapter 403 Florida statutes." So you're not allowed to bury them, so, thank you.
Commissioner Loeb, did you have a question?
I have a question, if I can direct it to staff, if I may. So how extensively has the potential impact to wildlife been examined?
This...the project in this...the project in this area was delayed back in 1995 in order to do very thorough environmental studies. We have worked with every environmental agency. We have satisfied all of their requests for information. We've done extensive mapping and monitoring of both the physical presence and intermittent burial and exposure of our reefs and the wildlife that uses those reefs. We designed the project, we worked with the Army Corps of Engineers, to design this project in a totally different way than they normally design their projects, to be a thin fill project in order to protect 90% of that rock reef resource, which we agree is a treasure. The 10% that will be buried intermittently, we have mitigated for five...we've built five acres of mitigation reef to mitigate for three acres, up to three acres, that will be buried from time to time.
I'm sorry.
And so I'll just...we don't have a...since the construction was just completed in June, we don't have a final report on the ecology of the mitigation reef yet, but I do have an email from the biologist consultant who did offshore transects in late June. So in the nearshore transect of the native rocks, there were no turtles seen on the nearshore transect. There were two that were seen over the natural reefs in front of Patrick Air Force Base as they were boating out to Brevard County's reefs. During the offshore survey, they saw mating green turtles, a couple of subadult and adult loggerheads, and off transect, they saw three juvenile green turtles and one adult loggerhead. There was a pretty cool-looking ribbon eel on the mitigation reefs. There were green turtles doing what we designed the reef to do. They were hanging under the little ledges that were constructed on the west-facing side. Lots of fishes, of course, algae, tunica, soft corals, et cetera. So that's what we have to share on the ecology of the mitigation that we've built so far. It was very important to us that we build the design and construct the best mitigation possible, since we are impacting a fraction of this reef, and we've done everything we can to try to balance the need to protect upland property, upland infrastructure, and protect that reef. And so the thin fill project does that, protecting 90% of the native structure and mitigating for the part that is unavoidably buried.
And just one more follow-up, if I may.
Hi.
So I don't know if I should direct this to Ms. Bentley or to Ms. Parker, but the Florida Coral Protection Act, I think, was what was mentioned. I'm not familiar with that. I don't know, really, whether that's something that's a potential issue with respect to this.
I would have to defer to Ms. Parker on that. There are the Magnuson Stevenson Fisheries Act, there's...this is essential fish habitat. There are many different federal and state rules that protect this habitat. That was part of the extensive review that had to take place of, you know, how is it that these agencies could permit us to bury some of this very precious reef resource? So all of that was taken into consideration with the permitting process and the mitigation requirements.
Thank you.
And, sorry, one other thing is if our mitigation reef were to fail to meet all of the requirements of all of the permits, then we would stop maintaining the beach project. The beach would go back to eroding, and the native rock would become reexposed and recolonized by the critters that will still be occupying the 90% that's protected.
Thank you.
Karen Colby?
Hi. Karen Colby, Indian Harbor Beach. I listened with great interest. It kind of changed some of what I was going to say. First, I've heard people mocking the whole worm concept. Okay, these worms are not actual wiggling worms, and it actually builds the reef. They have a lifespan that's short enough. When they die, more grow on top of them. In a sense, it's a growing, living reef, and the most important job it has, in my opinion, is to protect us. By dumping dirt, a substandard, to the local sand that is native, and it is, and that has been proven, and if you smell it, you'll understand, it doesn't belong there, and the sand is different. The sea little critters that I used to see are not there. Okay, so what I was going to say was how important it is to understand that these are not just worms, these are critters that build algae, that build coral, that eats algae, the algae that can potentially threaten us, such as red tide. It could be eating all kind of nasty algae. Some of y'all swam in it over 4th of July weekend. Back to what I was listening to. First of all, the Army Corps of Engineers, aren't those the guys that built all the canals and made the messes that we're trying to fix right now? I don't know that, in my opinion, as a native, I'm going to listen to that as 1,000% accurate as the reason that it's okay to bury my reef. And the second thing I want to say is that I really didn't plan on talking about this reef today, because I'm glad I have this opportunity, though. When I look at what has happened to it, it's not 10%. It's more covered than 10%, guys. I was out there three, four times in the past two weeks. I have not seen my reef. Where is it? It's gone. It does two different things. That thing offshore supports, let's see, turtles, a ribbon eel. I heard some other species, but I didn't hear what I wanted to hear, which was hatchling redfish, hatchling snook, hatchling pompano, hatchling permit, hatchling bluefish, redfish, and some finger mullet. I didn't hear any of those mentioned as frequenting the reef that's supposed to mitigate the damage to the one that's actually been damaged, more than 10%. I want to know, first of all, please respectfully, how is that measured? How do we know it's not already at 80% damage, which is what I'm looking at as a non-scientific beachgoer? It's gone. I mean, to me, it's vanished. Secondly, how are we tracking that 10% and who's doing it? And can I please be part of that committee, if there is one? Third, the animals that are out there on the offshore thing that's mitigating have nothing to do with the animals that are crushed and buried under this fake sand. It washes down during the rain. We've had a lot of rain. We've got a hurricane offshore. Let's see what that does. It's going to be a hurricane as soon as it crosses us. I stand corrected on whether it's a hurricane right now or not. What it does eat, this little critter, it eats algae, and it eats plankton, and it eats some filtery materials. It's really a good thing for us to have here. It cleans the water clean. That water, that dirt you guys dumped that came out of the mid-Florida is certainly not going to keep the water clean. It's adding a murky substance to it, and it foams. I've seen the form, I've got photos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow, that's pretty amazing timing.
That's pretty good.
Commissioner Loeb?
So I was just wondering if you care to address any of the concerns that were raised, and then I have one of my own. I'll just kind of throw it out there now, and you can take it in whatever order you'd like. In terms of the dirt that's being put out there, the fill that's being put out there, is it sand? Is it dirt? Are there any concerns that it has either phosphates or nitrates in it, or, you know, what is actually going on out there in terms of what's being put down?
So, one of the things that we've worked with the Army Corps, the timing of this project, constructing it at the same time as re-nourishment of the south reach. By doing that, we're able to use offshore sand from Canaveral Shoals, which is beach-quality sand that's placed out there, you know, placed by Mother Nature offshore of the Cape. It's been on the beaches, washed down from the Carolinas, you know, migrating its way, and it's definitely the quality that we want on our beaches. Smaller projects, individual parts...one of the challenges of this thin fill design in order to protect 90% of the rock reef is that we can't typically construct it with hydraulic dredges using offshore sand. So historically, we've had to do truck haul projects using upland sand. By constructing this with the south reach, we're going to use the hydraulic dredges to pump this better-quality offshore sand onto the south reach and then truck it from the south reach to the mid-reach.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Matt Fleming?
My name is Matt Fleming. I'm from Satellite Beach, and I organized an effort called Save the Midreach. The reason I did that was because of the damage that has been ongoing to our beach. So I'm here today to enumerate the significant design flaws of the Midreach Shore Protection Project and appeal to the self-interest of each of you to do the right thing and delay the certification of lands. The natural reef that runs along the shore is a valuable natural resource. These are things that make it valuable: its accessibility, its biodiversity, and its uniqueness. It is home to great fishing, good surf breaks, endangered species, including sea turtles. It functions as a physical barrier to erosion. It provides a place to observe and learn about wildlife, and is a unique attraction for tourists. The project design is this: bury the natural reef with continued massive and damaging nourishment projects along eight miles of our beaches. This dumping is composed of both dirt and sand. It is an effort to widen the beach, being sold to us as upland structure protection. Despite claims that this project is not intended to bury the nearshore reef, that is exactly what it will do. The emergency nourishment project from after Irma has already buried much more than the stated 10% limit of shoreline reef burial. Here are its additional flaws. The design of the project uses a beach profile which does not reflect the natural profile of the beach. It widens the beach significantly. The formulations used to calculate the natural north-to-south sand movement were intentionally flawed by Olson Engineering to give the impression that more nourishment is needed than actually is. This financially benefits whoever is slated to get the bid on this project. Inland material has been used three times in previous emergency projects. Three times, it caused severe degradation of the quality of the beach and nearshore water, resulting in significant and accumulating harm. The mitigation reef, which has been constructed offshore, provides an enhanced habitat for marine life. However, it does not mimic the ecological functions of the natural coquina reef in numerous measurable ways, despite the fact that this is a requirement of law. The economic benefits and costs of this project have not been accurately measured against alternatives like managed retreat or smaller-scale nourishment. In fact, they haven't been accurately measured at all. The argument that we have to do beach widening or build seawalls is a false choice. The 20-year time range, 600...in the 20- to 30-year time range, 600 to 1,000 feet of seawalls may be necessary. This accounts for less than 5% of the total length of the beach in the project area. I'm running out of time, so I'm going to skip down here a little bit. This Army Corps project is projected to cost hundreds of millions of dollars over the next 50 years. The cost of sand is increasing, and the availability of beach-quality sand is decreasing. By any measure, this renders the project financially unsustainable in its current design. Sea level rise was not included as a consideration in the design of this project. Local opinion was never surveyed in this project's inception. Upland inland sources are both approved for the project. Somebody figured out how to turn dirt into money, and I think we all know who that is. Somebody figured out how to turn dirt into money, and I think we all know who that is. Vote against this. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Sorry, sorry for peppering you with questions here. In terms of dirt being put down, is there any dirt, per se, that's being put down? Or is all of it beach-quality sand? Because I'm just hearing different things from different folks.
It's beach-quality sand. The state and federal permits have very specific requirements on the grain size distribution and the color, and we exceed those federal and state requirements.
And in terms of the 10% limit, do we do anything? And if so, what is it that we do to determine that, on an ongoing basis, we're not exceeding that 10% coverage?
So, because beaches are a very dynamic system, and you have offshore bars that move on and off seasonally and with storms, these rocks are buried and exposed off and on with or without any of our projects. So, in order to get a true picture of how much rock is there, we've had to map that rock on multiple occasions across the last decade. We've used the combination of those data sets to document how much rock has been there historically, and we will continue to do that as part of our permit monitoring requirements going forward. If we exceed that 10% burial, we will either have to provide more mitigation, or we will have to scale back our project, scale back maintenance of the project so that more of the natural reef becomes exposed. I think there was one other comment on the no-public opinion. There were numerous public forums, public workshops held in the Satellite Beach community back in 2008, 2010 timeframe during the environmental design portion of getting this project ready to bring to you at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item G, public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. Now, moving on to public comment. Reverend J.B. Dennis, and after Mr. Dennis, Sandra Sullivan. When you guys come up, if you just give your name and your address or a name and city.
Good morning, everyone. Reverend J.B. Dennis, 3710 Catalina Drive, United States Naval Combat Vet, retired. First of all, I'd like to thank the County Manager's Office. I brought the issue to them five weeks ago. That issue is 95% resolved, and I thank them for the effort they put into it. Now, when it comes to the SHAF wanting more taxes, that'll be a no vote for me. I have no confidence in the leadership we're getting from him on our drug epidemic that we have in West Cocoa. We talked about that issue from 2010. It's 2019. That issue still is pending. So, we're not getting nothing for our tax dollars as it is. 73% of the people voted with the SHAF's third cap or third request to raise taxes. 73% of the people voted to cap taxes. So, be it resolved that the will of the people is upheld with a 5-0 vote for no more taxes for the SHAF or nobody else in this county. Thank you very much.
Sandra? Let me read.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, you know, a lot of people have said this dump material is just my yard. And an interesting thing has been going on in South Patrick Shores these last few weeks, and that is gas lines are going in. So, the company installing the gas lines is digging big holes down to the water table, and they're digging up all kinds of military material. So, there's a recent comment from the EPA to DEP saying, "My yard is just quarter material." Well, here's a 50-caliber bullet that was dug up yesterday by the company doing the gas lines on Southeast 1st Street. Here's a bottle. Here's a bottle that, this design of Coca-Cola bottle was only made between 1937 or 1930, mid-1930s to 1948. And this says Titusville, Florida. Here's a melted one because there are incineration pits in the area, and there are liquid disposal pits that work, chemicals or liquids of whatever nature deposited in the ground. And then there are pieces of naval dishware. We found, they said they found other pieces that have the anchor on it on other streets. The material is so dense, it broke their bit on their directional bore machine for putting the gas lines in. Machine was disabled all day yesterday because they hit something on Southeast 1st. Now, it's one thing to be ignored for, like, how many months? I've come up here, I've done show-and-tell a number of times. Last meeting, I came up with oil from an oil barrel that was dug up in my yard. And we've asked and asked for your help to go and get these people and get us help. Now, the EPA has scaled back to six tests for our community for the EPA assessment. They are testing six wells. They're not testing for floaters, which are the petroleum products, or the TCE that was added to the oil that was, with these barrels that were documented as being disposed in our neighborhood. And we have other issues. The water is bad enough dealing with the stress of dealing with this, but then you can't even drink the water? This is, this is coliform bacteria. This is a matter of public record. It's on the 2018 Water Report from Melbourne Water. And the water issue people have been coming to you for a while. There have been meetings with Melbourne Water by citizens, with Courtney Berger from City of Satellite Beach. They're aware of it. And then they hold meetings at City of Satellite Beach saying, "Now we know on September 18. Now we know there's no issue with the water. Nothing's ever been dug up. Everything's fine." It's time for some action.
Mr. Charles Tovey?
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Commissioner Loeb, we want to thank you for your thorough explanations, making things more clearable to the outside public. A few of my, a few of my people don't mind you at all, and we appreciate your clarity. And thank you, Ms. Head Chair Commissioner Snarty, doing a bang-up job, and the rest of you are doing fair jobs. I haven't got the grades out yet. I have to change my three minutes of talking here for just a moment. And the smooth talkers that are appreciative to their way, they haven't been through what I've been through, and they experienced that other people have been through. And I appreciate their respect and how smooth their talking is, but until people wear my shoes, if I have a pair, then anyways, what I wanted to talk about and put on my card was the erosion dune line. And I'm a general practitioner. I just don't limit myself to this, or that, or this, or that. I have many talents, and I affect myself towards all of these items, just like eating a herd of elephants, and it takes time for fruition to evolve. But the erosion is one thing that I work on. They call it mass wasting, and it's a process of slope creep and slope creep and slump, slowest processes of erosion. But if you look at the beach and all the nice sand that they're putting down, that might suit their needs and be approved, but it isn't the same quality. And they're putting all this stuff on the beach, and the drainage, instead of it soaking into the ground, goes right into the ocean. And they're putting all the sand that we're spending money right in front of these things, and a first rainstorm comes along, blows it all right into their, no, what it's doing is filling in the marine life immediate on a shoreline and making a sandbar all the way out to their new reefs that they're doing. And that's a similar thing to what's happening on the lagoon as well. And is there all the, one of these days, you'll find out what I do and how important it is, and it's a necessity to our lagoon and our environment and the beach and the rest of the things. Back to the erosion, I spoke, and I bits and pieces, but if you look at the big picture that I paint, it's different. And I have, one of these days, I'll have time to explain it all. But we raise all our new buildings off of the ground, so it all runs off. It doesn't run off and soak. It drags everything that, we have all these laws, and I don't have time to, but it drags it all out into the ocean or into the lagoon. Starts there. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Crisp? Hi. Name and address or name and city?
Janice Crisp, and I'm from Palm Bay. I just wanted to come up here and thank you guys again for allowing us to express our freedom of speech here today. As this is a God-given right that some have forgotten and that it cannot be taken away, but only given away, I'm here today to say that we intend to not give it away without a fight. The Brevard Democrats have relentlessly for months come to the chambers to disrupt the county business. Today, they're here yet again under the banner of civility. So, I would like to take this time to talk about that issue civility. Here are a few quotes we should not forget. "If you're not prepared to come to that table and represent that voice, don't come. Because we don't need any more brown faces. We don't want to be, who don't want to be a brown voice. We don't need black faces that don't want to be a black voice. We don't need Muslim, Muslims that don't want to be a Muslim voice. We don't need queers that don't want to be a queer voice." Democrat Ayanna Pressley.
Are you going to let her continue?
People love you. And you will. People love you, and you win. And when you, your son, when your son looks at you and says, "Mama, look, you won. Bullies don't win." And I said, "Baby, they don't, because you're going to go in, we're going to go in there and impeach that MF'er." Freshman Congressman Talib, also a Democrat. In response to citizens, to a citizen's tweet on gun confiscation, Democrat Eric, Democrat Eric Swalwell tweeted back, "And it would be a short war, my friend. The government has nukes, too many of them, but they're legit. I'm sure we could be, we could find a common ground to protect our families and communities." Melissa Martin said she had better things to do than work on this ordinance. I agree. I think the county commission does as well. We have water issues to fix. The lagoon has more problems to continue working on. We have businesses and homes that need attention. Citizens need the attention of their elected officials more than they need a redo of the sticks and stones. Will break my bones, but words will never hurt me, rhyme we learned in kindergarten. If these petty, skin-thinned issues are truly what Brevard Dems are concerned about more than the business of Brevard County, then I suggest they focus their attention on the issues that reside in their own party, both locally and nationally, first, then come back to us. Whenever their own precinct chairs, one of which was removed by a sheriff deputy during the last meeting, and the chairwoman who claims all of Brevard voters
She's allowed to speak.
Are, and I quote, "local yokels and bigots cannot abide by the civility pledge or even common manners have a serious problem." Thank you, and get back to the real business you have been elected, ladies and gentlemen.
Jenny Swisher?
My name is Jennifer Swisher. I live in 113, well, I live on Southeast 1st and South Patrick Shores. I moved here from Bozeman, Montana. My parents are snowbirds. They're Suntree. They live in, what is it, Cocoa Village. They are going to buy me a house because I cannot grow up with my children and see one of them, say, get cancer in their early 30s. Because for 30 years in South Patrick Shores, you all have been writing newspaper articles, talking about it constantly, ALS clusters, cancer clusters in South Patrick Shores, and nobody's doing anything about it. So, did anybody disclose to me when I moved here? Absolutely not. So, now, as a mother of four and a caregiver of a combat vet, I am currently packing, stayed up till 3 o'clock, probably why I'm like about to cry, because we need to move. Because my property, each morning that I wake up, I walk outside with the dogs, there's glass, shards of glass, at least 60 to 65 per day, I pull out of my property. There was an airplane fuselage underneath my pool, and the fact that they're saying it's not a military dump, you have got to be kidding me. Come on, I pull out naval plates. I mean, it's, it is a military dump site. The EPA has called it one, and then everybody's kind of like either afraid to speak the absolute truth or admit it. I mean, make a decision. Say something. Is it a military dump? Was it not a military dump? Should people have the right to know before they put their hard-earned money and their VA home loans that their husbands fought for on a piece of property? I'm so lucky that I can move and take my children because my parents are helping me. I wouldn't be able to do it on my own. I'd be stuck there. My neighbor, every day, I go take care of him. He has ALS. He got, David Jackson, 30 years in that house. Now, he's like has ALS. Another gal about six houses down has ALS. Another one, two houses step back, passed away and passed away. We have a problem in South Patrick Shores. It is, everybody knows it. Everybody at the grocery stores, they talk, there's names. They make up names about the place that we live, maybe because we have a strip club or something like that. It's a seedy neighborhood, so people aren't putting their money into it. That's ridiculous. It's beach property. We could have an incredible opportunity. I made great friends. I'm going to end up losing most of them because I have to sell my house and move. Am I going to tell them what's underneath my, yes, I am. I will not sell it to a mother. I would never, ever. My children have cut their feet. My dogs have eaten glass. I mean, there is so much stuff underneath the property in South Patrick Shores that it's dangerous, and people are going to continue to get sick. Pardon me. I don't mean to be all emotional. It was the first time I've ever done this. But people will continue to get sick unless we get together and get something done. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've heard the comments made today, and we have done something. I, September last year, and I'm the one that got the Congressman Bill Posey, Senator Rubio, and then Senator Nelson involved, and they in turn got the DEP and the EPA involved. Now, if you're saying that they're not doing their jobs, then you need to contact the federal administrators. We have no power.
Many times, many times, every week, nothing is happening.
Okay, you guys can't, I appreciate your passion, I do, but...
So, I just wanted, I just wanted to know, I just wanted to let you folks know that we do care. It's not like we're sitting up here twiddling our thumbs, but we have no power jurisdiction, anything, to remove stuff from your yards. So, if you've complained to the federal authorities, then I would say, keep complaining, because the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Commissioner Loeb?
I'm just going to phrase this in the form of a motion. I move that I be permitted or authorized by the board to send a letter to the federal legislature, federal legislators essentially expressing the county's concerns with respect to that situation on behalf of the board and encouraging them to continue using all available resources at their disposal to do whatever is possible to better identify and rectify the situation out there. It'll obviously be wordsmith to be better than that, but that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith.
Just a comment.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Loeb, would you run that through Eden before we mail off? Thank you, sir. Then I'm in favor of it.
Anyone else? Okay. Seen on, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Matt Fleming? Yeah, and the last item.
Matt Fleming, Satellite Beach. I just wanted to explain to everyone in the room what was voted on earlier with respect to the Mid Reach. to the mid-reach. They have voted to bury Brevard's natural reef. And, and the vote was a procedural one that they are gonna go ahead and say, even though property owners are appealing the decision to take their property to do this, they're gonna say, well, we're gonna assume that appeal's gonna happen, let's approve this today and waste millions and millions of tax dollars to destroy a valuable environmental resource. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
That's probably not true.
Okay. That's all the public comment cards I have. All right, moving on to item H1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H1 is a petition to vacate 10-foot of the 20-foot public utility and drainage easement that's along the rear lot line of Lot 12, Block 358 of the Port St. John, Unit 8 subdivision. This will allow the owners to make some improvements to an existing concrete pad that's, that's currently within that easement. Notices were sent out to county agencies, public utility companies, and we've received no objections.
Commissioner Pritchett?
This is pretty simple, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
I have a card. I'm not sure if they want to speak or not. Dawn Shook? You don't need, you don't have to speak on this item, but I have a card. I mean, okay, come on up. I wasn't sure if you were the applicant or not. If you could just state your name and either address or city?
Dawn Shook, 5919 Palm Street, Mims, Florida, 32754. Basically, I just want to know, is there gonna be a cost to me for this, for this easement and this right-of-way? The fence also, Jack Ward owned my property and his property, John Vogt. So the fence actually is owned both, by both of us. And I'm a little confused about the location of this easement as far as-
Okay, I think you're talking about item two. It looks like that your card was labeled incorrectly.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so do you want to wait to item H2? I apologize.
That's okay.
I just don't want to confuse the two.
Does that motion to approve, Madam Chair?
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loebur. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item H2?
All right, item H2 is a petition to vacate part of the 50-foot wide public right-of-way of Pike Street and its line between two parcels in Scottsmore. The specific right-of-way to be vacated is located between lots 11, 12, 18, and 19 of Block 37 and lots 14 through 19 of Block 89. The owner owns all of these lots, and this will allow for combining the lots and building a single-family residence. The petitioner has executed a public drainage easement in favor of Brevard County as requested by the Public Works Department. We've sent out notices and received no objections.
Now, Dawn, I apologize. Come on up.
I just wasn't sure as far as how this was gonna impact me. As far as like, is there costs involved to like remove the fence for him, or is he responsible for all the fees to do this?
Okay, we can get your questions answered.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to try?
Please.
So the petitioner has charged $640 for processing that request. I'm not sure about the fence. I wasn't aware of any fence between-
Okay, I'll let them, I'll let you guys. No, that's okay. That's why we have a hearing on it. Yes. Do you want to get on the record?
If you would come up, I'd appreciate it, just to make sure we got a good record.
Do you want to come up? You don't, you're not required to by any means, but-
If you don't mind.
Just state your name and address or name and city.
John Vogt, Cocoa, Florida.
Okay.
I own both properties, and her concern is down the street a little bit. So this is between my two properties. It's a future road that was probably in the 1940s, they said they would put a road in there. There hasn't been any of those roads put in, and this has been going on for a while in that area. I just wanted to get the easement vacated so I could combine it and have a one-three-acre lot, was my whole thing. And her fence is behind the property. It's on the back property line. It has nothing to do with where we're at.
Okay.
And like I say, I'm just trying to get it so I combine all three lots to have one tax ticket-
Makes sense.
And put a house up there.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett? Second by Commissioner Loebur. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H3?
Item H3 is a request to approve the exchange agreement between NASA Investment Partners and Brevard County related to the stormwater retention area property at the southeast corner, corner of NASA Boulevard and Wickham Road. Staff has prepared this agreement per the board's direction to address the specific list of items that was discussed in the May 30th board meeting. This includes that the developer must acquire the adjacent two-and-a-half acre site to be used as a replacement pond. The developer must provide for all of the design permitting and construction activities for the relocated stormwater pond prior to the exchange. The project must include addressing conditions needed to prevent upstream flooding. The pond design must also incorporate the stormwater needs for their proposed development, and the exchange is not to occur until the completion of the pond construction.
Mr. Knox?
Scott Knox, Weidman Malick Law Firm, 1990, West New Haven in Melbourne. I think the staff's covered the exchange agreement contents very well. This was authorized by the board back in May, May 30th. We worked hard to get it done, and I think we have it done. I just want to make one comment about it, which is that Commissioner Loebur had asked for a lien provision, which we did add to the surveillance. We've agreed to that as well.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, if for some reason the county, sorry, if the owners of the land that's being transferred to, to the ownership of NASA Investment Partners don't maintain the new retention pond, then there'll be a lien imposed on the property that's being acquired by NASA Investment Partners for the amount of, amount of the cost of the maintenance.
Commissioner Tabaya, were your questions for Mr. Knox or for staff?
Staff, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just one question to Mr. Denninghoff. On May 30th, you stated, well, that you thought this was a fair deal. Quote, "I do not know whether this is the best deal we can get." My question is, since May 30th, has anything changed?
No.
Madam Chair, I voted against this because it was a no-bid contract, and I didn't think there was any logical reason why we shouldn't put this on the market to see if this was a fair and just value. Since nothing has changed, I'll be voting no on this.
Anybody else have any other comments? Commissioner Loebur?
I'll just say, I voted no as well, but I think at this point, essentially, I've lost that vote. That's one of them that did not go the way that I was hoping. But that said, I do appreciate Mr. Knox working with me and ensuring that we have some more favorable terms to the county in there, so I'm gonna be supporting it today.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, since they are the ones that own the property that is going to be transferred to the county and no one else does, it just makes sense that we should go through with this, and it benefits the county as well. So I'd like to make a motion to approve H3.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. And before I take a vote tally, Mr. Denninghoff, how much property taxes were we collecting on that existing property that we're transferring?
None.
Okay. And they're gonna invest $570,000 in maintenance over 30 years?
That's an estimate of it, yes.
Okay. And you worked extensively with staff. I spoke with Frank about this yesterday. Do you feel comfortable with this exchange?
Yes.
And do you see it as a benefit to the county?
I do.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. Item H4?
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Board. Item H4 is a request to conduct a public hearing to consider revisions to the zoning regulations, Section 62, 182, relating to the Planning and Zoning Board, to establish some term limits of this appointment members to eight consecutive years. This revision also would allow for the reappointment of a member after serving two years as an alternate or having a two-year hiatus from the board. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner Loebur?
Just want to call, just want to call Commissioner's attention to the second page of the struck-through version that's on the agenda here. One of the concerns that I had gotten, that I think everyone was copied on here by a constituent, was what would happen if there simply aren't any individuals who are inclined or qualified to serve? So you'll notice that one of the additions here is a commissioner may request the board of county commissioners waive the aforementioned term limits should they have difficulty filling a member position. So I think that that at least puts that concern to rest as far as, as far as I'm concerned. With that, I'd move to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loebur, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H5?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H5 is a second and final public hearing for the annual action plan. The public comment period ended on the 21st. We received no public comments. The agenda item itself lays out a number of requested actions for the board for projects to be able to move forward in the coming year.
Commissioner Loebur?
Could you give us just a little more background in terms of this? I think it's something that may be a benefit for the public even to get a two or three-minute synopsis.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
As part of the requirements for the federal funding we receive from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, we're required to every year put an action plan together that outlines what we've done the previous year and projects that we're gonna be working on in the coming year. Every five years, we put together a comprehensive plan that kind of encompasses everything that we hope to as a long-range planning. That will come back to the board, I believe, in 2020 or 2021. I'd have to go back and check. So this is just basically checking that box for the federal government. As a result of that, like I said, what this will allow us to do is for those projects, it allows the chair to sign off on all the federal documents that are required for the grant, allows the county manager to sign off on all the project contracts, and allows the Department of Housing and Human Services to do whatever is necessary to move those projects forward, bidding and so on and so forth, and also authorizes the county manager to sign budgetary change requests.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, you know, in the future, I'd like to see us shift toward more, again, I think we've talked about this during the budget workshops extensively, more towards the core needs, food, shelter, you know, as our primary focus and when we develop that next action plan. If, I don't know how the board feels in that, but I know a lot of work goes into, into putting that together.
Could I just ask for a little clarity on what you're referring to as core needs? Because most of the CBG funds-
Right.
We do infrastructure with those dollars. That's, we do roads, we do speed bumps, we do street lighting, drainage projects.
Well, obviously, besides the, that's a core function of our government, but I'm talking about as far as the extra services we provide, the service funding we provide. I'd like to see that go in that direction.
Are you talking about the public service activities?
Yes.
Okay. We can have a conversation with you and see what we can do to maybe address that.
Great.
All righty. Item H6?
We need, we needed a vote on that.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Loebur?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I have a request for a quick five-minute break, so we're gonna take a break for five minutes and then we'll come back.